I'd like to say good afternoon, let's call a proper planning commission to order. Ms. Morgan, if you will, would you please call Row?
Mayor Gillespie, Councilman Bowles, Chairman Gardner.
Here.
Vice Chair McCauley, Chief Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Carpenter.
Here.
Mr. Hall, Mr. Nelson.
Here.
And Mr. Smith.
Here.
Thank you. Let it be known that we do have a quorum. The first order of today is the election of officers. Do I hear a nominee for chairman?
I nominate Mr. Gardner.
Second.
Second. Do I hear a nominee, another nominee for chairman position?
Wait a minute.
No, we don't wait, Mr. Hall, you got it.
Excuse me?
Thank you, sir. Have a seat. Do I hear another nominee for this position, for chairman position? All right. All in favor of this position for Mr. Gardner, let it be known by raising the right hand. All opposed, likewise? Thank you. There's no business for November fifteenth?
What about vice chair?
Of the vice chair? Apologize. Do I hear a nominee for the vice chair for the city planning commission?
I nominate Mr. Roy McCauley.
Do I hear second by Ms. Carpenter? Do I hear another nominee for the vice chairman position? If not, we'll close it for the nomination. All in favor of Mr. McCauley, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign? Thank you. Now, there are no business? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Who would like the chairman, the president, are you?
Yes, sir.
Or every year, every day, let's swap each other, we're not going for all, just switch.
That's one of the things, Mr. Hall, that we would have to discuss that with the planning department in our bylaws, as a part of the bylaws. And until such time, I believe, we vote on it to change it in such that manner, then it has to continue. At some point in time in our work session, you can bring that up, and then we can discuss it.
Very good.
Thank you. Sure. There's no minutes, and there are no old business?
We do have none of them.
We do have minutes?
November fifteenth.
November fifteen minutes. I apologize again. All right, November fifteen minutes. Have everyone had a chance to read those minutes? Has everyone had a chance to read those November fifteen minutes?
We'll find a place for you.
You just want to... Sure, ma'am. Let it be known that Mayor Gillespie is now president. You want to table the minutes? Do I hear nomination?
I'll show who, Mr. Chair.
Do I hear second?
Second.
All in favor by taping the minutes, let it be known by raising the right hand? Thank you. Motion carries. The old business, there is none. And the new business, rezoning of FAR, that's Forest Agricultural Recreation, to an M2, that's Heavy Industry on Highway eighty-two East, petition is a private development group LLC. And this is a public hearing. If you're going to speak at the public hearings, please go up and sign in. And this is whether you're for or against.
Currently, we are going to go ahead with the rezoning. My name's George Walthall III.
Yes.
We have some conditions with the purpose of rezoning, the businesses coming in, that they're having some issues that they're not sure are going to be, that they're still going to need the property. We should know by the time, we have a thirty day from here. What do we need to do?
What do you need to do within thirty days, you're saying? All right. Any commission having a question, Mr. Walthall, Jr.? Yeah, this is a public hearing. Thank you. Mr. Duke?
Mr. Gardner, if you would allow me, I will fill in some blanks here that I believe Mr. Walthall might have left off as far as the purpose, just for the public hearing content. This is a request to zone the property from basically our lowest intensity zoning, which is forest agricultural recreational to an M2, heavy industry. The property is located at, it's a vacant piece of property located on the south side of the US eighty-two bypass east, roughly between the railroad and the Doster Cut Off Road. The property in question is, being requested for rezoning is eight acres, and is part of a larger twenty-two acre parcel. Be glad to answer any questions at this point, or wait until after the public hearing.
Does anyone have any question, Mr. Duke, at this time?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Well, we'll wait after the public hearing. Is there anyone else to speak for or against? Would you please come up and state your name and your address?
Right, okay. I had to find out what the piece of property he was talking about.
This is a larger twenty-two acre piece.
Right.
Roughly runs between the railroad and this property line. Piece of that, basically between the...
Okay.
To be rezoned.
Okay. Well, that, because that takes care of some of those questions. My name is John Lee Finnegan. Do you need the address?
Yes, please, for the record.
Okay, two eleven Deer Trace Street. I do have one question. If they just rezoned this parcel, all the other, they have to come back each time to ask for rezoning?
Sherlock, I can't hear.
Oh, I said, do they have to ask, come back each time to ask for another rezoning? Because what I see is this whole part here, and that's what I thought the whole rezoning was going to be.
Mr. Duke, can I answer that, please?
Yes. The actual piece that would be included, and just for some clarification, the piece, the legal description was presented to us originally, basically covered their entire piece of property, but it was since narrowed down, and that would be the legal description that would be part of what went on to the city council, okay? For public hearing purposes, there was notification for about the whole piece of property, which is sufficient. Anybody being interested in that piece of property, they're well aware of it. But specifics of it is eight acres of that piece of property. Answer your question is, it's funny, if they came back and wanted to rezone...
Not like, here's the piece they're talking about?
They're asking to rezone specifically that piece of property, that little eight acres of this larger piece.
So this will all remain FAR?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
And they have to come back and ask for rezoning for that?
That's correct.
Okay. I still have some comments. Sorry for the confusion, but I thought it was going to be the whole three pieces, so...
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Some notes. First of all, I'm against this starting. One of the reasons is the aesthetics. If you look at that piece of property, it's a very small part, and it's right near eighty-two. And one of the things I was worried about is once we get started with something like that, rezoning the rest of it. When I moved here in eighty-nine, all I could rave about is how beautiful Prattville was. I said the green, and I had moved from Hawaii. And I just said, it's just beautiful, and the trees, and the hills, and everything, and we're slowly but surely losing that. I also feel that is the main entrance into Prattville. And again, the aesthetics, just, I can just see with manufacturing on both sides. We also have other industrial parks. We have the one that's right near that area, kind of out of the way, and I just think having industrial buildings, et cetera, on that portion of eighty-two would just destroy the entrance into Prattville. I really think keeping it rural until such time that, you know, it becomes a necessity, but I don't think it is right now. Another thing that worried me very much, and especially with eighty-two, is the safety factor. That is a two-lane road. It's fifty-five miles per hour. I actually almost got hit on that by someone passing another car. You think of trucks entering, big semi-trailers. These supposedly, the business that wants to come in will be loaded with railroad ties, then the chips will be going out. I think it's very dangerous. How are they going to ingress and egress? When I looked at the plan, I did not see any exits for them. It's like they were going to stop dead, turn left, turn right, when they're coming out of the thing, and also turning left into it. So very, very dangerous. I also called the Department of Transportation, and they said that the landowner needs to come back and show how they're going to handle that ingress and egress. The gentleman also told me, in time, in the far future, as we are probably aware, they are going to four-lane, probably a divided four-lane, but when that will be, who knows? In my mind, they are going to have to have more property on either side of that in order to do that. So it doesn't make sense to all of a sudden have buildings there, ingress, egress, when that's probably going to have to go away when they do end up four-laning that, and it's going to be a divided highway. So I just don't see why we have to have the danger of that with a two-lane. And I don't know how the rest of you feel. I travel that road all the time. And if you haven't traveled it, I really suggest you do, because it's very, very dangerous. Also, the type of industry. I've heard it's going to be bringing in creosote-treated railroad ties, old ones, and that they will be chipping them and then taking them out. International Paper does use them to burn in the boiler. They have a special filtering system, but there's also a video online, and I don't know if any of you have seen it, regarding the Selma operation, and it's all open air. It, the creosote goes into the ground, you know, the flakes going up. It's just very, very dangerous. There's a big lawsuit in Columbus, Mississippi, from this company that used creosote for treating the railroad ties, numerous illnesses, deaths. It's been ongoing since two thousand and one. The company conveniently filed for bankruptcy. It's still in the courts. It's one of those shifting. Another example of toxic waste, things like that, there was a company called REEF in Selacogga, R-E-E-F, and they are finding it, the EPA, in fact, it held a meeting yesterday with the people about that. But they're having to come in and clean it up. This is on a much smaller scale, but it doesn't make sense to be bringing in something that's very toxic and carcinogenic, that word, cancer-causing. Also, when I did the map, and of course, I was going to be talking about all the parcels, if you look at any kind of industry that comes in, they're pretty good size, and these portions, and especially that portion, is very, very tiny. And so you wonder what comes in, what kind of company is going to put that much money into making something or a building, and then staying there. To me, I see this as a temporary business coming in and leaving, and it just, it just doesn't make sense to have something. Again, I want to go back to the safety factor, because I just think trucks, semi-trailers pulling onto and off of eighty-two is very, very dangerous. Lastly, until that is four-laned, why can't we just hold off? And then when we finally see what the boundaries are going to be, how much extra land that's going to take up? Because that might even take up more of this property. I really think that, you know, a decision on changing that to FAR, because also, if you change it, rezone it from FAR to the heavy industries, that opens the door. And so then you start getting all the parcels. And then what? So this way, just, just put it on hold. And it sounds like a temporary business that's going in, and I don't think we need that right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. I have a question.
Okay, what's your question, Mr. Hall?
Don't we have it all? Ask questions?
Yes, please. You may ask a question now.
You need to go into the Department of Transportation?
Yes.
What does the Department of Transportation have to do with us rezoning this park?
Because it's eighty-two, and the trucks will be coming onto eighty-two?
But it has nothing to do, certainly has nothing to do with rezoning. If you rezone this, and it only goes to the Department of Transportation to request it permit, then it's when it's done.
But if you rezone it, you open it up, though. That's what I'm worried, so I'm saying, why do it right now? My, I went to the Department of Transportation because I was worried about the semis coming onto and off to the highway. But they're not turning on and off of that, right there. They would be turning dead stop off of eighty-two.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Any more questions? Mr. Speaker, would you come up, please, and speak your name and your address?
I'll try to talk louder, because these mics don't always work real well. I'm Dr. Jerry Simms. I live at one forty-one North Chestnut Street. First thing, I'm a member of the Board of Zoning Adjustment, but I want to make it clear that today, I'm speaking with my citizen hat on, not as a member of any board of the city. I have a bunch of concerns with this application. I learned about it because it first came before the zoning board, however. As Ms. Finnegan mentioned, they're planning on recycling, and I believe it's railroad ties, and I'll try not to repeat some of the things, but we all know about the carcinogenic effect of these parochlorophenol components that are in it. It's banned from residential use. It is allowed with some industrial uses, but there's a whole bunch of EPA restrictions on how it's to be handled. And as she mentioned, there's numerous lawsuits, including lawsuits against cities for improper handling. It's, if you want to see the video, go to YouTube, type in the search box "National Salvage", and you will see two videos of their Selma grinding operation. Basically, what it is, is a big chipper shredder, as a crane picks up these creosote, re-soaked ties, and it grinds them in the open air, open dirt. I don't know if the water tables could be contaminated, but there's, there's a pungent odor that's also emitted from this, so that's a big concern, and that's been a part of numerous lawsuits. So go to that website. The company, National Salvage, right now operates two grinding centers, one on Louisville Street in Montgomery, and one in Selma. So you're looking at the video in Selma. A spokesperson said that they need to be out of the Louisville address by the end of this month. The other concern that I had is the plan before you really doesn't have an engineering plan, just a, just a sketch. So you're not really seeing what the full operation. By the way, that drawing that you have in your packet looks nothing like the Louisville operation. They have a couple of small metal buildings, and then a crane with an open air. The men that are in the video, by the way, you'll notice are not wearing any personal protective equipment. The other part that I have heartburn is, from a planning perspective, I don't think it's good planning practice to carve out eight acres out of a much larger plan without you knowing what the concept plan is for that entire acreage, because that's important to know what's going to be going on. While it's true that your future land use map for that side of eighty-two is planned eventually for industrial, keep in mind that the opposite side of US eighty-two is future use, is a mixed-use residential. The land to the west of that property is mixed-use residential with a piece of green space. So that's real important to understand what's around it and the concept plan. Now, the M2 request, it's wide open. Basically, let me read. The uses permitted under an M2 are any industrial service or commercial use, except those in the opinion of the building inspector that would cause noise, smoke, gas, vibration, fumes, dust, or other objectionable conditions, which would affect a considerable portion of the city. So that, that's pretty much wide open, which is why I think we need to be really careful about what kinds of heavy industry go in those areas. And the other concern that I have is this property abuts our city industrial park. So I'm a bit concerned that in an uncontained environment, unfiltrated environment, I'm not sure that that's going to be a big selling point for the city attracting future tenants for your industrial park, particularly with the odor and the dust, not to mention the contamination. So with all of that, I did call, and finally, after numerous calls, I reached the headquarters in Bloomington, Indiana, for National Salvage, and they said that their plan now is to move the Louisville address to North Carolina. They don't rule out in the future a possible move to Prattville. But right now, they're going to maintain two grinding operations, one in Selma and one in North Carolina. But even with all that, I have concerns if it's done in an uncontained, unfiltrated type environment. So look at the video if that, if you feel you want to get an idea of what possible dangers that could be. That's really all I had.
We have any questions? Thank you. Yes.
Appreciate y'all doing your homework on this. Sure do. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else to speak?
May I?
Yes, have you signed in?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I know how to play the game. Yes. My name is George Walthall, Jr. I appreciate the folks bringing to your attention their concerns about this, and I'd like to address each one of those as we've addressed them. The first thing is, there are three of us that own the property, or surrounding this property, it's my sister, me, and my three nieces, because one of my sisters died. We own eight hundred acres out there. I believe that we're more concerned in the use of this property than y'all are. We're concerned about what the effect would have on the rest of the property. If it's a bad deal, we wouldn't be involved in it, because it's going to affect us a whole lot more than it's going to affect y'all or anybody else. Now, and so that's one of the first things that we want to keep in mind. Second thing, I have been fighting for the last twenty years to get that road four-laned. I have presented about ten years ago, a request to the planning commission, no, to the city council at the city and the county, merely asking for support for the highway department, saying, we want that road four-laned. If everybody's so concerned about four-laning that road, why don't we get up in arms about it? I couldn't even get the city council to pass a resolution asking for support for four-laying that road. Now, it is really good that they are, we just outlived a bunch of other projects, and they are going to four-lane it from the old four-way stop up to the, up past the, the old National Guard armory out there. That's in process. That will be done. The other aspect is that they already have plans, and we've been looking at these plans for about the last twenty years. The first person we called in dealing with this project was the Department of Transportation, Mr. Tim Wright. He's a division engineer, or the district engineer, that covers this piece of property, that is responsible for that road. We met with him and said, Mr. Wright, what will this have to happen to get this to be, to meet your criteria? He said, the first thing, or what will have to happen, is we will have to have a turn lane sooner or later. We will give you a variance, if in fact this project moves forward, we'll give you a variance until such time as, as soon as they get in place, they'll have to start construction on a turn lane to turn into that piece of property. That is part of the contract that is with national, national security, no, National Salvage. So the turn lane, I am concerned with anybody. I don't use Doster Road Cut Off. I don't go out Doster Road Cut Off, because there's so much traffic. You'll get killed if you go out there. I don't use Washington Ferry Road. I don't go out there. I go out Highway fourteen, I take a left and go up to Highway thirty-one, or I turn right off of eighty-two onto Washington Ferry Road, but you'll get killed on that road. And I don't understand why the city, the city council, and anybody in this community is not up at arms and meeting with the governor about that road. And so we, we would like to address that. Now, when, when the, the road, industrial boulevard was developed, it was contemplated that that road would go due south to go into the industrial park. Since then, criteria has changed. They don't have the site distance coming over the railroad track. So that road, in the last drawing that was perceived, when we had vision and, and the purchasing of the South Industrial Park, Doster Road Cut Off would go through there and snake through the property. So there is a concern that how the traffic's going to be handled, but that should be addressed on a daily basis, and that should be concerned on a daily basis. We had the grant for it. Of course, we lost the grant from standpoint of the people didn't come through and didn't build, and things of that nature. And at one time, we lost the grant, because we didn't have the money to put up our side. So, you know, that, that is concern that we have, in our, in our deal about the South Industrial Park, we will give the city, have always been considering to give the city, the access right from eighty-two to the South Industrial Park across the railroad track. Now, I don't know whether you're aware of it, but that railroad track is a joint-use railroad track. There's only about three or four areas in the state of Alabama where you have joint-use railroad tracks. It's really a unique situation, and it was a whole lot more unique until the new railroad, the short-term railroad came in there and took over from CSX, the run from Maplesville down to Union Camp, which is a Toga National now. But that is a joint-use railroad track. The purpose of selecting this site, and the only site they considered in South Alabama or Central Alabama, was this site, because it, it joins and is next to the railroad. If it wasn't next to the railroad, they wouldn't have any thought process of using that site. As to beauty, certainly, we were concerned about beauty, and we have told them from the day one, there would be a berm along eighty-two. There would be trees planted on that berm along eighty-two. Not pine trees, not tulip poplar trees, they'll die, but real trees that'll last for the long term. We're concerned about the beauty, and we want entrance in the center, and, and it'll be from there. Now, as to the groundwater, they addressed that before we even considered it. You can look at Selma, because we went and looked at Selma. But we looked at Selma because that is a pretty archaic operation they've got over there. They're able to get away with certain things over there, because it was there a long time before anybody concerned what was going on, and they have, you know, it's, it's got a lot of cross ties out there. In this plant right here, this operation here, all of the water, groundwater would be recaptured, and recaptured and reused. There would be none going into the water table. Say it again?
It would be filtered.
Filtered, captured, re-filtered, and put back on to keep the dust and noise down. We were concerned about the noise level. The new type of grinders, and this type of grinder, because one thing is going to be kind of, not underground, but it's going to be at ground level. I think he said you had forty-five decimals, but at three hundred feet or something. It was something that was very tolerable in everything. It was something that was very tolerable in everything. Now, if you wanted to stand out there, and I didn't realize, you can go and you can hear when they turn the presses on at Plaxicon and at the other plastic plant out there, you can hear the presses turn on and turn off. It's that kind of noise. So, we have been concerned about the noise, and we looked after that. Whether this is a short-term or a temporary business, the contract they've agreed to sign, if they move through with this, is it ain't going to be temporary because they're going to be on the hook. And so, it'll be a long-term. We were concerned about the business and whether they, what kind of employees, whether they would have, and what the employees would be paid, and whether they may wear masks or this kind of things. Those are ocean standards. Whether they meet the ocean standards or not, that's not my business. That's OSHA's business, and the employees are not, if they're not treating the employees right, certainly that needs to be addressed. Odor, I don't think that's going to be a problem. I didn't observe any odor in my visit down at Selma. Of course, you do have an odor when you grind up pine, cross ties with some creosote in it. You do have some of that creosote smell, but I don't think it'll be an offensive. It's going to be an offensive. It's going to be offensive to the owners that we may develop the property in the future. The whole concept, and Dr. Simmons is correct, in drawing the master plan, everything south of 82 was to be industrial. That's what the concept is. That's the reason we participate in it so that we would have, we have a long-term plan for the property. We developed a long-term plan on our property about 25 years ago, and that fits into our long-term plan. M2 is the proper zoning. He mentioned noise, smoke, and smell. We think we've addressed that. And again, we'd be more concerned about all these aspects than you would, and I'm not going to come before you something that's going to be detrimental to 800 acres of land for eight acres of land. And I'm here to answer any questions to anybody that's got about this project.
And the commission have any questions?
I have a comment if I might.
Mr. Walthall, I commend you for working all these years trying to get that four-laned. I've been working on it since 1967. I requested the administration to time when I pass away, which I will before that's done. There's very few people in this room who's going to see it completed. That's just the way things are. I want to cremate me and put me in the ashes, put me on that road when they start four-laying it, sprinkle it all up and down it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else like to speak? If not, we close the public hearing. Mr. Smith, if you will, would you read the rezoning request for FAR to M2?
Resolution, rezoning request FAR to M2, Highway 82 East, Prattville Development Group, LLC, petitioner, January 17, 2013. Whereas the Prattville Development Group LLC is the owner of the property described in the attached A and shown in attached B, N, whereas the property to be zoned is located inside the city limits at Highway 82 East and the south side of Doster Cut Off, and whereas the petitioner wishes to rezone the property from FAR, Forest Agricultural Recreation, to M2, Heavy Industry, and whereas the public hearing on the proposed zoning was held by the Prattville Planning Commission on January 17, 2013, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby recommends the rezoning of said property from FAR to M2. Is that made?
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Open for discussion. Mr. Duke, give us your report.
I'm going to try to separate a few things that are being discussed here today. First of all, we need to look at the overall zoning that's requested, which is the particular item that's before you. And it's difficult to dismiss all of these other concerns or requests, but you need to be aware that the zoning sets out those uses which can be permitted in that particular zone. Okay? So, while the Walthalls are making this request based on their need to or desire to lease the property for a particular use, that is not the limitation of what you're being requested to do. If you recommend, and the city council approves the rezoning to M2, then, as has been alluded to by, I believe, two speakers, is any of those uses that are allowed in an M2 district can come and seek a building permit from my office without coming back for any type of hearing before this board or before the city council. So, when you're looking at zoning, you're looking at those broad uses, not just the single use that's being discussed today. Also want to mention that we're talking about eight acres that are part of a larger tract. And oftentimes, this board has requested an overall sketch plan or a development plan. It doesn't have to be extremely detailed, but some idea that the property owner has a general plan for that remainder of the property. That is not a requirement. That is not in your statute, but that has been the practice of this board at times. In this case, I would say that if the zoning was set today at M2, then it being the most intense use that you basically have in your ordinance, then that's going to set the zoning for the remainder of that 22-acre tract and probably have some influence on the property on the opposite side of the road. Major highway like that is a good separator between land uses, but it will have some The discussion's been had today, I think it is very good. The first thing you need to note is that this request is in conjunction with the general guidelines of your future land use map. It was envisioned that this property, basically south of 82, because of the industrial uses that had already been designated by the city, the designation of the South Industrial Park, the utilities that have been put in there, utilities that were there prior to that. You have high-capacity electricity, high-capacity natural gas, all of which contribute to this being very well-suited for industrial zoning. You also have the fact that there is a good bit of separation with a couple of exceptions of this property and the industrial park property from the majority of the population center in Prattville. While the Walthall family may have some designs on residential property on their larger pieces that are just north of this, that's not in place at the moment, and there's time to really deal with that through future zoning and looking at what happens with these industrial properties. So, this property remains well-suited for industrial zoning. The city's made some decision long ago that that's important for job retention, job recruitment. So, you need to make sure you designate some place in the city for these types of uses. With that being said, this request is consistent with that. It is identified that 82 is the dividing line between these uses, that anything south of that is appropriate for industrial use. So, the real question today is really about timing and understanding that if you designate this small piece today, that it has an impact on the larger piece in the future, not necessarily just for the city's concern, but also for the property owner, that they need to know that that's what's going to be expected. Coming back and asking for a lesser zoning at some later time with the remaining pieces is probably going to be difficult to do. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I have a question, Mr. Duke. Do you know of any plant such as this one that runs, that they're using in the U.S. that's running safely and properly, other than the two that's been mentioned?
Mr. Gardner, for this request, that's not an area that the city, let's see if I can put this, I don't know the answer to your question. And the reason that I would not have researched that is not, this is not an area that the city regulates. Okay? This entity is regulated by EPA and by extension by the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, and most of those concerns that were brought up are covered by federal laws and some state laws that really match those federal laws. If we had a concern, let's say that plant was there, was properly permitted, we had some concern about that, somewhat like we do with stormwater management and erosion control, we have a pathway where we have to contact the state agency. The state agency's not responsive than EPA, but we don't administer those regulations, and that's not something that we would research. Now, to answer your question, if that's something we need to look into for you to have good information to make a decision, we'll be glad to do that, but that's not something we would do as a matter of practice.
Ms. Carpenter?
I do agree that this meets with the future land use, which we have, you know, tried to follow and everything, but my concern is that we have in the past asked for a sketch plan, especially when there's undeveloped property. My concern is that we don't know what the plan is for the rest of the property. I know they probably don't know, but we can't have 18 cuts in Highway 82, you know, and we have made developers in the past show us how the ingress and egress and, you know, how that is going to be developed with the minimum number
Ms. May.
...of turns off of, especially a major highway. And I'm still not real sure about the turn lane thing. I'm really not, I haven't seen it. I don't, you know, I mean, usually, we see that kind of stuff.
Ms. Carpenter, I'll go ahead and answer the turn lane question. That is something that would really come at the development plan stage, but, and we would have, between the city engineer and my department, some influence over how that's addressed by the state. I don't think anybody has said that there wouldn't be a turn lane required. I think there's some statement by Mr. Walthall that there's some timing issues on that, but I can't imagine the state not requiring a full-blown turn lane and us not seeking that. Traffic issues are very important on 82, and we would need to see that addressed at the development plan stage.
Because my concern is the turning in and out, and, you know, this is one turn, well, it needs to service the whole thing, not just, you know.
And I believe that, again, that kind of goes back to my discussion. If this site becomes the initial site, and that turnout is going to be looked at, I imagine by this board and by the city council as being, what they've selected as being the primary entrance to the remainder of that property. We're not, the city has not encouraged and certainly has worked with the state to deal with access management on all the state highways, to the point that the state has actually adopted some access management of their own on Highway 14. So, we share your concerns in that regard.
Does anyone else have a question? Mayor?
And thank you, Ms. Carpenter. You brought up a good question, and I was also going to follow up about the egress/ingress on that, but tell me a little bit about what type of control does, would the city have about the vegetation and also what kind of noise control we have with this being industrial?
The city has some noise regulations that basically deal with the amount of noise that can leave the site, emanate from the site of the property line. Vegetation, this would be handled just like any other commercial site, basically dealt with by the landscaping requirements that are in the zoning ordinance. There's perimeter, frontage buffers that are required. In this case, they would be abutting other industrial properties so that that buffer is not that great. Now, the city, on the other hand, has some pretty strong landscaping requirements for parcels that they sell in the industrial park. So, landscaping would be basically pretty heavy on both sides of that property line, but not, the city doesn't have anything beyond the landscaping ordinance for the site.
Okay. Well, thank you. And, you know, listening and looking a lot of this stuff over, you know, something was brought up about the safety of the employees and stuff, but I don't think that that should really be a part of this rezoning of this property. I guess the other area, I mean, because that's what OSHA's about, and I don't think that's really city.
No, sir. No, sir. That's really the gist of my point about separating some of these things out.
Okay.
Is that you're really looking at the land use of the property, but not necessarily this single land use.
Right.
You zone that property, the city zones that property M2, then it's open to any of those uses that I think Mr. Simmons alluded to
Right.
being allowed in an M2 district.
Which this actually does play into, like was mentioned earlier, about how the rezoning, the master plan, really fits. The only thing I'm really having a problem with, I guess, right now is that, you know, we've got X amount of acres here, and we've got, we're only talking about eight acres. And with that actually said, I'd actually, I want to make a motion that we hold this over into our next commission meeting, and that way I can do a little more research on that and maybe become a little more comfortable.
Hold on a minute. Mayor, would you rescind that motion for a second? I want to ask Mr. Walthall, Jr. a question.
Yes, sir. Certainly will.
Mr. Walthall?
Junior.
Junior. That plant that you're talking about building, will it be further enough off the road so you could build a service road in the event that that property, with the land use take off, you could build a
I just was thinking about that because I've been working on development of that property for years, and I'm also, I just got a property rezoned over in Millbrook last night, or night before last, and service roads are nice, but I don't think there's enough depth between there and the railroad to have a service road along there. It's going to be a real concern for me, y'all, and the highway department as to what we're going to do about that. I just was thinking out loud right then, we've always designed it to come into the middle of this site. It ain't coming in the middle of this site because I know the highway department, highway department don't care about y'all, but the highway department cares about the way they draw their plans, and, you know, it gets to be about 200 or 300 feet between entrances. They ain't doing that no more. I don't care where you got access to the property or not. So, I'm thinking right now, it has just moved to the side so it would service two separate sites so that if we came back and asked for another six acres or whatever, because it ain't, it's just not wide enough. And of course, had we thought about that 40 years ago, we'd have moved the railroad track back about another 100 feet, or we'd moved Highway 82 or north another 100 or 200 feet, but that's the answer to that. The one other thing is that we don't have a problem with the mayor's request because we do have some things that have not been ironed out, and we don't want to make any representation to y'all until we can speak firmly about that. Other thing is that we have talked long and hard, and we are familiar with what Dr. Simmons has found out, that up in North Carolina, South Carolina, they have bought a big building that has a lot of concrete space and all this kind of stuff, and they were contemplating putting up there, but we were hoping, they deal with like 3.5 million cross ties a year. This is a big operation, and I'd love to have some of that money down here, so, but that answers the question that we don't have any problems carrying it over to come back to you. And if I can find that plan, which would be his responsibility, we'll be glad to provide you with an overall concept of the site, the whole 800 acres.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mayor?
Thank you. Yes, I make a motion that we hold this over until our next commission meeting.
Do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Smith. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Walthall. Thank you, Mr. Walthall. The next order of business is a replat Prattmont subdivision lot ten, eleven, and twelve, eight oh nine Dozier Avenue and eight forty-nine Davis Street. Owner, Carnegie Sim Brooks and Anthony and Tammy T. Hughes. Engineer represented, Jerry Hams. Mr. Duke, tell us what we got going on.
Yes, sir. You have a request for a replat of two lots in the Prattmont subdivision. This was lots ten, eleven, excuse me, ten, eleven, and twelve. There are three lots that were there that were originally platted in the nineteen fifties. You have two addresses there that, houses that sit, that straddle these, these lots. Okay? Basically, what happened is that somebody owned the, the north side of Lot B and somebody owned the north side of Lot A, and then I think they at some point split the other lot, but they never replatted it. And we're just, they had another situation where they built another house on this lot, and we asked them to clean that up in the end, which is
This is cleanup.
This is cleanup. This is house cleaning. These lots exist this way today. They just had never been platted as such. Somebody did a meets and bounds description to split the center lot at an older date. And this will make, if you're not aware, plating makes life easy for everyone in the future. From here on out, these lots get referred to, to this, by this plat. There is a clear line. There's no more meets and bounds transfers where there's an error that could be picked up by every successive surveyor that writes a legal description, or every successive surveyor that goes out and tries to find a pin. That's, that's the beauty of plating process, is that it sets that property in stone according to this document, is referred to that from there forward, unless it's changed again by some other plat. Anyway, that's a long explanation for a simple process.
It's good, though. Do I hear a motion for a simpler?
May I ask a question, please?
Go ahead, Mr. Hall.
Is this the lot where this new house had been built out there on that corner?
Yes.
I wondered about that from after I did it. I'm sure, I bet you y'all they've gotten, handling all the questions answered.
Yes, sir, we did. Just to ease your mind on that, there was a situation where they needed to build a new house on the same lot, and they came before the Board of Adjustment asking for permission to do that, and then they tore down the old house. Is that, has that been completed?
They, they lived in the old house law of building a new house, doesn't have any more to go. So you guys approved that and you built a house and tore the house down?
Period. Has the house been torn down yet?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry, I hadn't been by there to take a look, but the, the old house has been removed.
It looked good. Good job. Appreciate it. Thanks. My case of the mayor's interest in the one before me.
Thank you.
I'm a builder, so you guys got any questions?
Mayor, you had a question?
Yes, sir. Not necessarily for, for you, but for Mr. Duke. I mean, the neighbors have been contacted.
Yes.
Okay, that's, I don't see any of them out here.
The immediate neighbor is the one involved in the replat, and so everybody's aware of what's going on there. And, and the other thing that need to be aware is there's no change in, there's no change in the configuration of the lots. We're just really memorializing here what's already been in place for twenty years or so, maybe even longer. These lots have been divided, they just hadn't been platted properly.
Thank you. Now, do I hear a motion for a, a simple motion for a replat?
I make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Nelson. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. The next order of business is another replat of Habitat for Humanity, Wilberford, Platte number one, nine twenty-five Wilberford Avenue. Owner is Habitat for Humanity of Attica County and Chilton County. Engineer is Habitat for Humanity. Mr. Duke, you gonna tell us what's going on here?
Yes, sir. In this case, you have an existing lot, or existing house that's being removed by Habitat for Humanity for a rebuild on the same location. The house was, your old house was built across the two twenty-five foot wide lots that existed there in college, on the College Heights plat. And so this is, is plating that, those two lots together. Again, this is how that lot has been configured, or, excuse me, has been used for over fifty years. It's just there doing some housekeeping here to clean that up, to make sure that's cleared up for the, for the property owner when they do the rebuild.
All right. Any question for Mr. Duke?
What's the zoning of this lot?
This is an R four lot.
R four?
Yes.
Any more questions? Do I hear a simple motion for a replat?
Sure.
Mr. Nelson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Carpenter. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't count with this. One second. Any more business to be discussed? General business?
George.
Mr. Walthall?
If I may, having been before you several times in the last ten to fifteen years, I want to encourage you to again consider impact, impact fees for residential subdivisions. If I go and subdivide a two-acre parcel of property, I ought to pay X number of dollars into an impact fee fund. We have the poorest park situation in most communities around here. I have asked for years for this, this group to make a recommendation to the council to include impact fees like we did when I was on the council, impact fees for sewage. We did that because we extended the sewer out to Highway fourteen. And, and I didn't know I was gonna be in the development, and, and all of these things that I was a part of has only cost me money. But it's, it's the only way that we're gonna continue to move forward our park system. Another thing, you need to do an impact fee on traffic that causes a problem.
That's right.
Now, when I was on the city council, and hopefully we've gotten over this situation of giving away money to buy business for our community in the mid, Midwest and up in the areas that had towns on three, four corners, and they had, at that time, Kmart would come to town and say, hey, I want to build a Kmart on this corner right here. How much money will you give me? This first fellow said, I'll give you the, a million dollars, and the city next door on the other corner said, I give you two million, and the city on the other side said, I give you three million.
Mr. Walthall, now, you know this commission doesn't have any effect on the impact fees or, they might have a recommendation, but it's the council who has to pass those.
I, I understand. They tell me that they have to, they might, y'all won't do it without a recommendation from the, from this group, so that's bound to me.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. We officially adjourn.